And he says to me that you got through the second article of the Creed. Yes, praise God. Now, let me just say to you that someone who sits in my chair struggles with the fact that I wasn't here for the very hardcore and the center of all of Christendom, all of the Christian faith, all of the Word of God, and I gave it to somebody else to teach, and now you tell me it's done, and I need to move forward. So let me just say to you that the Bible, from cover to cover, is about two people. It's about Jesus, and it's about you. It's a love story from the Father's heart about His Son, Jesus, and the price that He paid to buy you back from the hell that your sins deserve. And so, the Bible from Genesis to Revelation really is all about Jesus. But the target of His affection, and the reason for His coming, and living the way that He lived, and dying the way that He died, and rising again from the dead, is to buy you personally back. If you were the only person to have ever sinned and fallen short of His glory, You still would have come, lived, died, the death of the cross, because He loves you that much, that much. And so, now that the price has been paid, the topic for us today is the answer to the question, how do you believe that? How is it, how in the world, you all believe that, right? That Jesus lived and died and rose again and bought you, right? You believe that, right? Yes, you believe that. How in the world would you believe something that the world considers foolishness? How would you come from unbelief to faith and believe that story to be your story, and your life to be intertwined with the King of kings and the Lord of lords? That's what we talk about today. The third article of the Creed is about who? The Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit. And so, if you want to find, in the explanation section of your catechism, if you want to, if you want to find the, and I think there are catechisms over there, if any of you need some, the idea of, I want to find the, in the explanation section, I want to find the third article of the Creed and Luther's meaning, everything after the words, what does this mean? Everybody on that page, we're going to read it together. We're going to read it together. So first, we'll read the third article of the Creed, and then we'll read the meaning. And you want to think about it in such a way that you, "How did I come to believe in Jesus? How did I come to believe in Jesus?" Ready? So let's all together, third article of the Creed, ready? "I believe in the Holy Spirit, the holy Christian church, the communion of saints, the forgiveness of sins, the resurrection of the body, and the life everlasting." Amen. What does this mean? "I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to Him. But the Holy Spirit has called me by the gospel, enlightened me with His gifts, sanctified, and kept me in the true faith, in the same way He calls, gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth, and keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith. In this Christian church, He daily and richly forgives all my sins and the sins of all believers. On the last day, He will raise me and all the dead, and give eternal life to me and all believers in Christ." This is most certainly true, the good Lutheran saying. This is most certainly true. This is most certainly true. Turn to your Bibles, if you would. Turn to your Bibles to, let me get there. 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 3. 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 3. 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 3. Somebody want to read that? 1 Corinthians 12, 3. So the second half of that verse says, "No one can say Jesus is Lord except by the Holy Spirit." Why? Look in your Bibles, if you would. To my confirmation verse. Ephesians 2:8-9. Raise your hand if you know your confirmation verse. Oh, come on, y'all. You need to find that out. Okay, well, let's talk, because we need to recover you from that. Was that a great answer, or what? I, at some particular point, those of you who were confirmed in the Lutheran church, there was some pastor somewhere, unless you did it some other way. All of the, all of the classes that I and several of my brothers in the clergy, there is a tradition where we pray over each child, and we think about the temperament, and the spirit, the understanding of what we have of that child, and then out of that, we go to the Lord in prayer, and give to that child, give to that person a confirmation verse. And it's amazing to me how often, often, when you get to that person's funeral, or when you try to sum up that person's life, or you try to find guidance for why they are the way they are in their relationship with Almighty God, that passage is central to their love language between them and Jesus. And so, I would just encourage all of you who have that confirmation verse to find out what it is, and to pray about that, and to think about that. It is, it is a wonderful thing. So mine is Ephesians 2:8-9. "For by grace you have been saved through faith, and this not from yourselves, not from yourselves; it is the gift of God, not by works, so that no one can boast." Romans, chapter 8, verse 7. Go there with me. Romans, chapter 8, verse 7. Romans 8:7. We have one more after this, and then we'll stop this journey. Romans, chapter 8, verse 7. Matt, do you know what I don't like about this? When anybody watches it online, it looks like I'm in a room by myself. So if you just want to pan, just, can you pan? Just pan through the whole room, and everybody wave at him. Follow the camera. When it comes your way, wave. Praise God. Look at that. Now go the other way. Everybody wave. You're all excited. No pressure, Steve, right? You got it, right there. All right, praise God. So, thank you very much. Romans, chapter 8, verse 7. Somebody want to read that? So, we believe, teach and confess together, that without the power of the Holy Spirit bringing someone from unbelief to faith, we are not just neutral. We are enemies. We are hostile to God. And, and the revelation of Almighty God and His Word is foolishness, says the Word of God, to those who are perishing. But to us who believe, it is the very foundation of our faith. So, the last one then says what I just said. 1 Corinthians 2:14. 1 Corinthians 2:14. 1 Corinthians 2:14. And now I'm going to give you something to talk about at your table. First, wow. That table over there has a little bit of an attitude. 1 Corinthians 2:14. Somebody want to read that one? 1 Corinthians 2:14. So here's what I want you to do. Here's what I want you to do. I want you to answer the question, "Do we have free will?" I know. I talked to her about it yesterday. Do you, do we have free will? So talk about it at your tables, and, and then we'll come back and have a conversation. Okay, let's come back together before you all start fighting. So again, now that you've had that conversation, before we hear reports out about what you said, let me just share a couple of things with you again. "I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to Him." The Word of God then says to us, 1 Corinthians 12:3, "No one can say Jesus is Lord except by the Holy Spirit." Ephesians 2:8-9 says, "By grace you have been saved through faith, and this not from yourselves; it is the gift of God." Ephesians 2:1 says, "You were dead in your trespasses and sin." Dead in your trespasses and sins. So, at your tables, how did the conversation go? What, what did you say at your tables about the answer to the question, "Do we have free will?" Who wants to visit with us? Just out in front of God and everybody? It's a yes and a no response. So explain yourself, pastor. Yes? Yes? You picked that shirt. Yeah, praise God. Awesome. And we will, left to ourselves, we will always choose to reject because we're hostile. So what else, what else came to mind for the rest of the tables? What else, or did that sum up, did he take away all of our conversation, because he's good? Did he? And are you saying that once you believe, once the Holy Spirit brings you from unbelief to faith, then all your decisions about the Spirit and your faith are yours? Praise God, praise God. And so, the Holy Spirit isn't a one-time and one-and-done kind of, kind of, third person of the Trinity. He is there with us every day to call, gather, enlighten, and sanctify us. And, and so, what else came to mind at your tables? What else did you have conversation about? My answer is forming in my brain, and it takes me all the way back to the Garden of Eden. Right? It takes me all the way back to the Garden of Eden, that there is nothing new under the sun. And it was, it was at the heart of why Almighty God gave to them the two trees in the garden. It was at the heart of it all, before sin, and before they entered into rebellion and brokenness and spiritual death. It was at the heart of their relationship that they would then, before the fall, choose to love Him. And the only way that they could choose to love Him was to have the opportunity not to. Right? And so, He gave to them these two rules. He gave many more rules than that, right? He said, "Be fruitful and multiply, take care of the garden." He said all kinds of things like that. And I'm sure there are things that aren't recorded in the Word of God that they talked about as they walked in the garden in the cool of the day. But the things that are recorded for us, and before the fall, they had this, they had this relationship with Him, where in this real, authentic, interpersonal, loving relationship by Almighty God, and the pinnacle of His creation, Adam and Eve, there was this opportunity for them, not just to say, "I love you," but also to make choices that show Him that they love Him, by the way that they honored what He told them about the trees in the middle of the garden, right? So, and, and when you think about the consequences of the fall, this passage came about because of their transgressions and sins that began in the garden. Ephesians 2, chapter, chapter 2, verse 1, says, "You were dead in your transgressions and sins." "You were dead in your transgressions and sins." And Paul, when he says that, he's talking to Ephesian believers. So that now the Holy Spirit has brought them from unbelief to faith, and He has this conversation with them about who they were. And He says, "You were spiritually dead." So let me, let's just unpack that for a second. Dead, right, dead. If someone, let's say it's me, fell out on the floor, right here, right now, dead, like dead as a doornail, dead, dead. Dead, right? What are the chances that I would come back to life if nothing ever on the outside acted on me? What are the chances? Not really good. Somebody, not really good. That's a hopeful answer there. That's a... So if I am physically dead, I am not raising myself from death. Right? When He says that you were spiritually dead, the reason that He says that is that He's trying to say to you, you don't choose to make Jesus the Lord of your life, because you're spiritually dead. And not only are you dead, but before faith in Christ comes, and the Holy Spirit opens you up, you're not just dead, you're rebellious. Some of us still have the Lord working on us with that rebellion thing, but dead, right? Dead, enemies of God, and rebellion, right? And when someone, look, there are whole denominations that are split off from one another because, because of one set of things. When we talk about coming from unbelief to faith, who's at work and who gets the glory? Some denominations in America, some denominations around the world in these days, would say that I participate with the Holy Spirit and make decisions, so that then, this phrase, "I made Jesus the Lord of my life," is a decision that I make. But I would tell you that it goes directly against these verses that we've just looked at in the Word of God. You were dead. You were rebellious. You were enemies of God. You would never, on your own, choose Jesus Christ. But it's not something to get divided over. It, it's really not. All you want to do in conversations like that, when you have them with people along the way, when they say to you, "I made Jesus the Lord of my life," don't come up to them and say, "No, you didn't." It's just not helpful. It's just not, it's not helpful. They will walk away from you in terror. But what we can say, you know what, I thank God. I thank God that that decision was made in your life. I just thank the Holy Spirit, that He inspired that decision in the inner working of your heart, your brain, your mind, and your circumstance. And the only difference between you and me is that I'd love to give Him glory. I'd love to give Him glory for that decision that was made in your life. That, that's all there is. But whole denominations go that way, because, because of something called decision theology, decision theology. And so, and so, when you, when you dive into the third article of the Creed, you begin to realize that you and I, we, now that we are, now that we are people born after the fall, right? You all were born after the fall, right? Sorry, that was an old age joke. Now that you were born after the fall, you were born without the ability to make Jesus the Lord of your life. But the Holy Spirit. But the Holy Spirit calls, gathers, enlightens, sanctifies. He brings me from unbelief to faith. He does this work in me. And the fact that you believe in Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior means that the Holy Spirit has been alive and well and working in you, in you. And when He begins, He doesn't end. Works hard to keep you in the one true faith, between now and the day that He gets you home. So, "The man without the Spirit does not accept the things that come from the Spirit of God, for they are foolishness to him, and he cannot understand them, because they are spiritually discerned." "You were dead in your trespasses and sins." "The sinful mind is hostile to God." "By grace you have been saved through faith, and this not from yourselves; it is the gift of God, not by works, so that no one can boast." 1 Corinthians 12:3, "No one can say Jesus is Lord except by the Holy Spirit." So the answer to the question is, just like Pastor said, when you, when you think about making decisions around your salvation and your belief in Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, we lost our free will at the garden by the decisions that Adam and Eve made. And out of great love for us, Almighty God then said, "I cannot, I can't, I cannot now let you reach out and eat from the tree of life and live forever this way, this way." Rebellious, spiritually dead, broken, with the curse of sin on you, in unresolved ways, with no hope. And so, He banished them from the garden, and it was a loving thing that He did this. He banished them from the garden, so that they wouldn't take out and eat from the tree of life and live forever that way, in brokenness, spiritual death, rebellion between them and Him. But what He did instead, in Genesis 3:15, He's handing out consequences to the serpent, and He says, "There will come one, there will come one down Eve's family line that will make right what got all screwed up in the garden." There you go. I used it on camera. "And he, you may, you may bruise his heel, but he will crush your head." And the Holy Spirit then began to inspire he who was there from the very beginning, giving design tips on creation. He began to inspire the hope of the covenant people of God in this Messiah who is going to come. "And now we have faith in this Messiah who has come, comes to us now in word and sacrament, and come, and will come to take us home, to be with Him forever in paradise." We have faith in that same Messiah, because the Holy Spirit has come and brought us from unbelief to faith in Him. Now, you do have free will, all of you. I mean, look around the room. Every single person who is here this day made choices to wear what you wore today at church. Right? Y'all, y'all are brilliant people. And so, I'm not saying that you don't, the Word of God is not saying that you don't have free will on many things, right? But in this one way, we know for sure, that at the garden, we lost the ability to choose to make Jesus the Lord of our lives. That is why what Luther says about the Holy Spirit in the first paragraph of his explanation is so important in the Lutheran church. He says, "I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to Him. But the Holy Spirit has called me..." What's the next phrase? "By the gospel." What is, what is the gospel? Look at your Bibles at Romans 1:16 and 17. Romans 1:16 and 17. What is, what is? Romans 1:16 and 17. Romans 1:16 and 17. Somebody, somebody want to read that for us out loud? I feel like breaking out in a mighty fortress is our God, right? Yeah, we praise God. We praise God. So, thank you, Nancy. "I am not ashamed of the gospel." What is the gospel? The Holy Spirit has called us by the gospel. What is it? So she said, "The good news that Jesus died for us, right? Rose again from the dead, and He gives us eternal life in Him." So, that's a paraphrase. So, so when you think about the good news of Jesus, it is a very Lutheran thing to begin at the cross. I would tell you, you need to begin at the conception. Because not only did He die for you, He also lived to fulfill the law for you. And both are important. And so, the whole journey, the whole journey of Jesus leaving the right hand of the Father to come on this rescue mission for you, took a perfect life, sinless life, from conception all the way through death. And the way He did what He did every day was to fulfill the law for you, so that He would be Lamb of God, without spot or blemish Himself, to pay the price for the sins of the world, when He was sacrificed on the altar of the cross. And so, and so, when you think about the good news, I, I believe it would bless you in your hearing of all the stories of the Word of God, and it would bless you to be able to say everything at the end of it all, and He did this for me, in the things that He did in His life. And then ultimately, in the, the mountaintop moment- And then ultimately, in the the mounted top moment of Good Friday, having lived the way that he lived to fulfill the law for me, he becomes my substitute to die a death that my sins deserve. And then the third day he rises again from the dead. And that's the Father shouting into the life, not just of the Son, but to each and every one of you, your life, your death has been paid for. And by the resurrection, death no longer has mastered over you, and I have paid the price to get you from here to home. Then he who has come will come again. He's gonna come again. Do you feel it? He's gonna come again. And every generation is meant to live as if it was going to happen again in our lifetime. Every generation is meant to live with an urgency. That said, we gotta get this right. We gotta get it right, right now, because he's coming again, and we want to take as many with us as we can. And so, and so he comes to you now in word and sacrament to strengthen your steps toward home. And none of us, none of us would believe this if it wasn't for the Holy Spirit. I am not ashamed of the gospel. The Holy Spirit uses the gospel to bring you from unbelief to faith. This good news, not any old good news in any situation, but the good news, the good news of Jesus, his life, his death and resurrection. I had an elder in a congregation. I don't want to tell you that story. I had a, I had a, I had an inactive member in a congregation that I've served in Iowa when I was there. And somehow, the story was, I still don't know how this happened. If you know anything about bailers, old bailers? The story was that he got his arm caught and got drugged through a bailer. There's no way he's still alive, right? I I don't know if the word through is literal. Lost an arm, lost a shoulder, lost a lot of of different things. And and in the midst of his life, he always told people that he was a member of the church that we served when we were there. And then I come, young, right out of the seminary full of myself. And he, and I meet this guy in the hospital, and he says to me, it is a miracle that I am still here, therefore I will be back and I will begin to worship with you again. And so hindsight began to say to us, him and I. Hindsight began to say to us that my faith in Christ has got to be based on his life, his suffering and death, and his resurrection. It can't be based on what he's done for me lately. Because on the energy of that miracle, however that happened for him, in the energy of that miracle, he came and he was with us and he was on fire. And then slowly but surely, it was a. Okay, I need another fix, God. What what have you done for me lately? Thanks for that, but the juice on that is wearing out. And so the Holy Spirit began to work on him to counsel, to enlighten, to sanctify. And and we began to talk together about faith in what Jesus has done by his life, his death, and his resurrection is the good news. It's not the good news that drug through a bailer, you came out on the other side alive. It's not the good news. Is it good news? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But you've got to come back to the word of God, back to what God has done, and that which is most sure in your faith and in your walk with Christ in order to stay grounded and founded in the good news. Make sense? Question? Let me take you to two passages. I I. I'm having a brain cramp. So somebody do the Google. Faith as small as a mustard seed. Where is that passage? And then the passage, a bruised reed he will not break, and a smoldering wick he will not snuff out. I want to know where those are. Luke 17:6 is the is faith is. Read it. So faith as small as a mustard seed. The idea of that passage in Jesus's words is that your your faith is only as good as your object. Your faith is only as good as the object of your faith. If you put your faith in your ability to do stuff, you're not moving any any mountains. But if your faith is in Christ, your faith is as strong as he is. He who did the work of creation. Right? And then the other passage, the other passage was a bruised reed. Somebody have that one? Where is it? Nobody did that. Y'all just sat there like bumps on log. Somebody get there. A bruised reed he will not break, and a smoldering wick he will not snuff out. Isaiah 42:3, and then it's recorded, it's it's brought forward into the Gospels again as well. The word of God says to us. Matthew what? Thank you, bro. Thank you for actually engaging and being part of my Bible plan. So. When you think about the work of the Holy Spirit, he doesn't just. He doesn't just fire us up and keep us on fire for the Lord. He sees us through the times when we're broken down. He sees us through the times when it's hard and we're about to lose our way. Right? Now, now Paul says to Timothy, fan into flame the gift of the Holy Spirit. Fan into flame the gift of the Holy Spirit. How do you do that? Fan into flame the gift of the Holy Spirit. What's he, what what would he say to us today? Pray? Huh? Pray without ceasing. Have you ever had a conversation with your wife when the two of you weren't getting along either? Did that conversation help you? I I would say to you that most times in my life, my deep intimate prayer life with Almighty God in Jesus is a is. Is a front of. A well-oiled relationship. It's not necessarily always the bringer of that relationship. I would say to you that I would say to you that fanning into flame the gift of faith, what he would have been talking about was the idea of diving daily again and again and again, in the moment by moment, things of your life into the word of God. Into the word of God and daily being in it individually and being in it together with brothers and sisters in Christ that can hold on to you and hold you up and pray over you and and inspiring you so that then out of that place, out of worship, even when you don't feel like it, out of worship, even in the midst of pain, out of worship, then comes then comes healing and forgiveness and abundant life so that then you can talk to him. And in conversation, hear him. But word of God also says to us that sometimes we don't know what we ought to say. But who intercedes for us? The Holy Spirit with groans that words cannot express. Have you ever found yourself unable to put into words at the gut level of what you're really feeling and thinking? That also on a daily basis, the Holy Spirit does for us. So let's move on forward. I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to him. But the Holy Spirit has called me by the gospel, enlightened me. If I'm enlightened, what was I before? Unenlightened. That's very good. Yeah, that's right. Awesome. That's got to be an English teacher, right? You're in the dark. Right? And then, and then he enlightens me, brings me from unbelief to faith and shows me, shows me my darkness. He shows me the light. He shows me his way. He shows me what I need. And then this word sanctification. The entire article, the first article of the Creed was the Father's, the Trinity's work of 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 creation given directly to the Father. Right? The second article of the Creed, Jesus redeemed us. And so the work of redemption. The third article of the Creed is called sanctification. What does the word sanctification mean? What? Made, is that what you said? M A D E, made holy, like past tense? Huh? To make holy. It so. So the Holy Spirit brings me from unbelief to faith, but he ain't done with me yet. How many of you still feel like you're a work in progress? Praise God. Because it's true. He ain't done with me yet. This is not heaven. This is Roselle. And all of us are in this war between the new man, the new woman of God, and the old sinful nature inside of us. Paul says in Romans chapter seven, the good that I want to do, I do not do. And the evil that I don't want to do, this I keep on doing. Who will rescue me from this body of death? Thanks be to God. He gives me the victory through our Lord Jesus Christ. It is the Holy Spirit who connects me to that victory in our Lord Jesus Christ. And he does that by bringing us from unbelief to faith. And then daily, as I draw near to him in the and 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 your walk with Jesus is not a constant growth on your way toward home to heaven. Correct? Your walk with Jesus is more like this. Maybe you got to go backwards sometimes and 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 the Holy Spirit, his job is is to take me through the process of life to bring me from unbelief to faith and to mature me in this faith now that we have tasted that the Lord is good. Right? And to see me from infancy to maturity in my walk with the Lord. So he goes on then to say sanctifies and keeps me in the one true faith. Now he doesn't just do this for you. Right? He doesn't, he does this for you individually, but he doesn't do this just for you. He also does it for others. And when you look at this new paragraph, it says, in the same way, he calls, gathers, enlightens, sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth and keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith. There's that word. Church. The whole Christian church on earth. What's he talking about? What's he talking about when he says the whole Christian church on earth? Somebody define, how many different definitions can you come up with for how we use the word church? Huh? The building. And please understand, there's nothing sinful about calling the church, the building, a church. It's okay. All right? I feel like doing this. Right? Yeah. The church is all the people of God who say that they are members of Trinity gathered together. Right? Yes, it is. When you say, I want to join Trinity Lutheran Church, you say, okay, Trinity Lutheran Church is made up of these people. And we love them all. There's a parable between the wheat and the chaff where Jesus says, because they come to him and they say, so do you want us to wipe out the chaff so that the wheat can join? He says, no, no, no. In doing that, you might tear up some of the wheat along the way. Just wait, wait till the harvesters at the end. They will take care of that. They they will do that. And 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 the parable is there because at Trinity Lutheran Church, there may be both believers in Jesus and people who really don't know yet. The Holy Spirit is still working on them, or maybe not working on them at all, or maybe they are, maybe they're just coming because their wife makes them. Not that I think that's ever happened. But to say that this is not the church, because there might be some unbelievers among us, is to put yourself in the judgment seat. And that's not your seat. That's not my seat. And so we are meant to love them all and let the Lord work it out at the end. So. And there's nothing wrong with saying Trinity Lutheran Church and including in that, everybody who says, hey, I want to, I want to be a member. Nothing wrong with that. But you're, I just said to you, you are wrong, but you're also right. Now, now there, before we get to that ultimate thing called the invisible church, other things, other ways that you can use the word church. I mean, we have denominational representatives here. The Lutheran Church, Missouri Senate, the Baptist Church, the Catholic Church. There's nothing wrong with using the word church that way. We just need to define our terms and remember what we're talking about. Right? And and there are different expressions of this Christian faith. I happen to believe, or I would not be an LCMS pastor, that the very, very best expression of this Christian faith is found in the doctrine of the Lutheran Church of Missouri Senate. Our problem is that our theology is right, but our practice stinks. Did you get that? All right. And then ultimately, I I can see all those. I can see a building. I can see it there. And so it's called the visible church. I can see everybody who has their names on the rolls at Trinity. I can I can see that. But what I can't see is who among them really truly believes in Jesus. I can see a denomination. I can see it. I can quantify it. But I cannot truly see who in this room truly believes in Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior. That is a very personal thing between you and the Lord by the power of the Holy Spirit. I, and so, and so the sum total, the church you really want to be a part of, the church you really want to be a part of is called the invisible church because we can't see what's really in your head and your heart that is just one on one between you and Jesus by the power of the Holy Spirit. Yes. Yes. So when you, when you think about, the one that I'll pick up there is called the communion of saints because it's in the Creed. Right? So, when you, when you think about, the one that I'll pick up there is called the communion of saints, because it's in the Creed, right? The communion of saints, what, break down those two words, communion and saints. What does that mean? What is? Community, it has to do with oneness. One Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God and Father of us all, right? Oneness in that unity. Um, and then, and then this, uh, communion of the saints, the believers in, in Jesus who are on their way home for heaven, those who truly do believe in Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior, that's the church you want to be a part of. It's found in, in Christian congregations like Trinity all around the world. All around the world. There are, across denominational lines, there are believers in Jesus in those places. And so, we who are believers in Jesus, we have this communion of the saints, this oneness that we have in Him, uh, who truly believe. But between now and the day that He gets us home, we live in these, and move in these, these amazing ideas of God called the Christian church. We live in this place where, uh, where the sum total of all those who gather on a Sunday morning are part of the body of Christ as it moves forward. And there are people in every state of belief or unbelief, and we love them all, and it's a mess. Then have you ever noticed that, that visible church on earth is a mess? Because every single person in it is a sinner, right? Every single one. Um, so, let's close with prayer, and then we'll pick up here next time. Father, I thank you that you have made us, by the power of your Spirit, believers in Jesus and His life, His death, His resurrection, believers. That He will get us home, believers that He comes to us now, believers that He is with us. He will never leave us, never forsake us. Calm, gathering, light, and sanctified by us, fanning to flame the gift of faith in each one of us and among us, and build us up to the journey that you have for us. In your name we pray. Amen.